Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the October 10th meeting of the governing body. Call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Ortiz, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I'm going to do something a little bit different. I'm going to ask that you take a moment of silence and pray in your own way. I need you to pray for our fire chaplain, who was going to pray tonight and broke both of her legs. I need you to pray for Israel and Tel Aviv and all those over there that are fighting. I need you to pray for the domestic victims in Topeka. One was laid to rest that's near and dear to our family. And don't let us not forget little baby Zoe as well, and all the other children that are out there. So if we could do that, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, Madam Perk, if you'll call the roll place.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Cale.
Here.
Nager.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
We have 10 present.
Okay, we'll move on to item number two on the agenda presentations, the Topeka Fire Prevention Week. City Manager?
Mayor and governing body, Fire Chief Randy Phillips will be presenting us via Zoom tonight to you. Randy?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, governing body, and everyone in attendance. It's my privilege to be here tonight to talk to you about Fire Prevention Week and the national message of this, which this year is on cooking safety. Fire Prevention Week is a national event that was started by the National Fire Protection Association in 1922 as a way to show remembrance to the Great Chicago Fire of 1871. The NFPA is a nonprofit organization that was established in 1896, whose goal and work is to help minimize the risk and effects of fire across our country. As I said, this year's theme, a national theme, is cooking safety. You can see from the slide that's showing also that cooking fires are one of the most common causes of fires in the home. It can be something that can cause a great amount of damage, as well as injuries to people in their homes. A few safety tips related to cooking fires and the kitchen fires is always remember to stay attentive when you're cooking. It can be easy to get distracted, start doing other things, and forget you have something on the stove. You want to keep all of your handles turned inwards, away where they're not extending out over the edge of the stove top. And also make sure if you have children in the home that you try to keep a kid-free zone of at least three feet around your stove and oven. If you do have a fire, especially a grease fire, one thing you do not want to do is pour water on it. With a grease fire, that will just splash it and spread it, and it will not extinguish it. You either can try to slide a lid over the pan, which will help take away the heat and oxygen, or if you have a home fire extinguisher, you can attempt to use that. If you do not feel comfortable, or do not feel like it's safe for you to try and extinguish it, grab your phone, dial 911, and exit the premises, and we will be on our way to help take care. A couple other safety points is if you happen to be out having a good time, maybe celebrating a holiday or something, you get home late, you've had some alcohol, it's not the best time to be cooking. We actually see a number of fires over the course of each year related to that type of a situation. Topeka Fire Department responded to 25 kitchen slash cooking fires in 2022, so it is something we do see. And I would just once again want to encourage everyone to please be safe and to enjoy themselves during the holiday season.
Thank you, Chief. Councilwoman Ortiz, do you have anything to...
So I guess it is true when they say if you can't take the heat, then stay out the kitchen. Is that correct?
That's good.
Is that correct, Chief?
Well, that's one way to look at it. Yes, ma'am.
That's good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to bring this awareness. I'm a firm believer in educating, educating, educating. And last night, the chief was at one of my NIA meetings, and we had four applications that were turned in for the free smoke detectors. And if you don't have one, shame on you, but they're still available. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, second presentation we have, Alternative Sentencing Court update. City Manager?
This presentation will be by Administrative Court Judge Karan. Karan. And he will provide an overview of the program.
Your Honor?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Judge Thaddeus Donnie here. I'm going to kind of give you an overview of what we do on the mental health court level here in the city. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I'm just representing the group. I'm not one man. I've got an ASC team. You will see who they are here. I've got my probation supervisor, Tricia Weeby, here, very integral part of this program. And at the end of the presentation, you will also hear from some former graduates of the program, as well as two that are currently in the program, one who happens to be working for the City of Topeka. So pretty cool stuff. So what is the Alternative Sentencing Court? A specialized docket designed to address the unique needs of defendants with mental health challenges. We started this in 2015. It's on the city level, about one of the three biggest mental health courts in the state. And the ultimate goal is to reduce recidivism and increase utilization of services in our community. And so, I mean, that's a lot of jargon. What does that mean? These people, they find these people, that's important, they find our way to us at their most vulnerable times in their lives. No family support, no shelter, been off medication for some time, maybe in the middle of a mental health crisis, maybe in the deep drudges of drug addiction. Our job is to try to help them, bring them back from the darkness, show them that there is light, build their foundation day by day, teach them the power of support and sobriety, the power of medication compliance, but most importantly, we give them love and support. And we teach them self-worth while holding them accountable. And ultimately, we teach them to trust the system, because it's not about putting people in jail. In that sense, it's sort of an extension of the Behavioral Health Unit. The ultimate goal is when we react to these calls on a daily basis, jail's not the option. We need to understand what are these people going through? Who are the people we can call to get them out of this crisis? What are their supports? What kind of crimes enter the program? Oh, it could be anything: DUI, lot of criminal trespass, drug charges, disobeying, three cases, four cases, it just depends. Need for this court. So as you'll see, nationally, at least 2 million people with these mental health challenges are booked into the jails each year, and about 72% of them also tend to have a co-occurring substance disorder. The vast majority of these people are not violent criminals, and most of their sentences are for minor crimes. They usually stay longer than their counterparts, because at jail, they're not getting the treatment that they usually need, and they're just deteriorating in most situations. At least 83% of jail inmates with a mental illness did not have access to needed treatment. I did do some research, and a 2020 American Psychological Association report says 64% of jail inmates, 54% of state prisoners, and 45% of federal prisoners have reported mental health concerns. So approximately half the people in US jails, and over 1/3 of the population of the US prisons, have been diagnosed with mental health. Benefits of doing this program: rehabilitative, opposed to punitive, better served in the community, knowing the services they have, and treatment rather than being in the jail cell. I think I've told this body before, in Shawnee County, it costs $96 a day to house an inmate. For a person with a severe and persistent mental illness, it costs three times that. So, you know, you multiply 100 times 3 is about 300 a day. You multiply that by 30 for a month, you're at $9,000. So that's a real cost. Jailing people with mental illness obviously creates a huge burden on law enforcement, the jail staff. When we deal with these people on calls, it takes multiple officers. When I do my jail calls, by video at the jail, there's numerous jailers in the room, cost of medication, cost of psychiatry, it's just, I could go on and what it costs. Discharge planners to link to the community, special housing needs. All right. So what are the details of the program? For first, it has to be voluntary. You have to tell us that you have a mental illness or an addiction, and that you're willing to participate, and you have to admit it. Usually, it's some form of probation or diversion. If you're looking at a fine, unfortunately, this program's not going to be for you, because we don't want to put an underlying jail sentence on someone whose history and behavior just, you know, it just warranted a fine. So you've got to be looking at probation, an underlying sentence, maybe a 12-month diversion on a DUI. We've got to have some teeth. We do 12 months in duration, 30, 60, or 90-day underlying sentence, and we are subject to sanctions. And what do sanctions look like? In some situations, 48 hours, could be five days, because you need to be clean for five days, and that's the safest space for you. It could be seven days. Could be an apology letter, could be an online class, community service. We've even had someone apologize to their treatment provider because they lied to them about their drug and alcohol use. So it's tailor-fit to what the needs are of the defendant. Referral sources: judges, Valeo staff, the VA, defense attorneys, we have a good relationship with the jail, TPD officers, and then ASC coordinator. All right. So in the one-year program, what does it look like? Treatment: regular court appearances, regular drug testing, mental health treatment. You stay current with your court costs, and when you're getting treatment, you're responsible for paying for it. And so whether or not you have assistance, or you're working to get that done, we're teaching you that when you're out there, you're going to have to do this. It's not something that goes away. It's a day-by-day battle, and so you have to learn to be able to sustain when we're not around. Prior to admission, you have to meet with defense attorney, which is our court-appointed attorney, and they're going to talk to you about the benefits of ASC, what the plea deal is, whether or not it's a good program for you. You're also going to do an assessment, a mental health assessment, with Valeo. Valeo's a big partner of this. At the table, we have a Valeo clinician, myself, the chief prosecutor, chief probation officer. Right now, it's Officer Razzo from the Behavioral Health Unit. We sit there in a group, and that's ASC team. We do three phases. Phase one is weekly, so every Wednesday, we establish your treatment plan, get a baseline on your last sober date, you start services, you do a weekly probation meeting. Phase two, bi-weekly. You're still doing the same things, but we're giving you a little bit of a break. You are understanding what you need to do, and you're taking care of your business. And then finally, phase three is probably the last three or four months, we want to give you the freedom. You need to be able to do this on your own. ASC is here every Wednesday for you, but to be productive, you're going to have to learn to do it on your own. So that's phase three. I talked about the weekly staffing meeting. Here you can see who's on the ASC team. The docket is every Wednesday at 2 o'clock, and we staff from 1 to 2. We do it here in the courtroom, talk about where they're at in treatment, how the probation appointment went, how mental health services are going. Have to get a lot of releases for that information, but it's pivotal for us to be able to meet the needs of the defendant. Incentives. So what does a good week look like? Lots of clapping, lots of clapping in here. Clap for clean UAs, clap for making your meetings. We do chocolates, give a lot of chocolates, gift cards. As you pass every phase, there's a $25 gift card to Walmart, and it doesn't seem like much, but it means something. I'll be the first one to tell you that. We do a Rocket Docket, meaning if you've met all your, check-marked everything for the week, I'm going to call you up here first. We're going to talk for a little bit, but you've earned the freedom. Go take your business, go be productive, go to an AA meeting, you've earned it. So what does success look like? Medication compliance, gain full employment, you graduated therapy services, mental health services, we may have helped you get disability benefits, permanent housing, you've completed your substance abuse treatment, and then more importantly, your mental health has not put you back in jail. We've had someone who was calling crisis daily to not call in crisis in six months. We've had someone go through this program that had done a stay at OSH, which is a state hospital here for a little bit, at the end is now successfully working at Mars. I've had graduated someone with therapy services that salvaged a marriage that was marked by domestic violence that came through the ASC program. We had someone with the disability benefits also get on with the TOTO program for the city after being sober for nine months. We've reestablished family connections, parents, siblings, and just more importantly, hopefully we help these people find happiness and peace, and just that we show them how to deal with life's ebbs and flows, because we all go through it, right? And so, we create the foundation, and hopefully, when they're done with us, they're ready to go. But that's what I've got. I think it's more impactful if you hear from graduates and people who are in it, to tell you their experiences and what it meant to them, where they were in their lives when they got here. We'll keep it brief, but the first one up is Dylan Gallagher. So I'm going to have him come up. Dylan graduated, what, four years ago?
Just about. A little shy of four years ago. Hi, Counselor. Nice to meet you. My name is Dylan Gallagher. Thank you, Thaddeus Donnie.
You're welcome. When he started ASC, and before I let him go, I was actually the chief prosecutor. And then I got lucky to become the judge, and so I was able to shake his hand and give him a certificate. And this guy's story is incredible. So, it's all you, man.
Thank you. Yeah, so a little shy of four years ago, I started the ASC program, which I didn't know was going to be the first day of the rest of my life. You know, back then, a lot has changed, you know? Judge Thaddeus Donnie became, you became the head person for ASC, Tricia became my probation officer. I remember that day a lot, because I remember paying guys. I was sitting in the bottom of the courthouse across, of this, of the courthouse over, across the street, broken. I was bankrupt financially, spiritually, emotionally. I was just a shell of a human being, right? I had no purpose, I had no willingness, I had no hope for life. She sat out there with me, you know, and offered her services and helped me get to crisis. I was a frequent member of crisis. I liked going to crisis. It was a vacation for my broken life. It really was, right? So that got me there to crisis. But let me go back a little bit. What my life had looked like is just in and out of jails, you know? Ever since I was juvenile, in and out of jails, but that spiral was a downward spiral, right? It took a year for me to go back to jail, then six months, three months, right? And it was coming to the, I got introduced to ASC because I had picked up a case, got out of jail, and before I even met with my probation officer, I was right back in jail, right? So they introduced ASC. And I joined ASC voluntarily, right? It's a lot better than going to jail. You know, I didn't like the fact that I had to come here every week. You know, I liked my life with no structure. I liked my life the way Dylan wanted it, because apparently Dylan liked to be miserable, right? That was Dylan left to his own biases. So coming to ASC, Judge Thaddeus Donnie painted the picture perfectly, right? It is for people that basically cannot take care of themselves, right? I was not normal. So a normal approach on correcting me was not going to be sufficient, right? We could throw me back in jail, and I could come out and do the same exact cycle again, but this different approach, you know, coming here, meeting with people, I like to say this program positively manipulated me. It did, right? Because they did. They found out what I needed, right? My basic human needs, and that was for my best interest, and we took those and ran with it, right? We built motivation in my life. We got that ball rolling, and we just kept it rolling, right? I was homeless during ASC. I had, I obtained housing, you know? I got a better job. I became drug-free, alcohol-free, all that good stuff. I became treated for my mental health, and these are all things that is a huge win, let alone it was a huge win for me to even show up every week. Like, that's where my life was at. I had no commitments, and that's the way Dylan liked it, right? So coming here, and like you said, the claps, that is very true. You know, just a little bit of praise for someone like me who was so broken, you know? I had no ties, my family was long gone. I had burnt every bridge, guys, except for the one I was living under at that point in time in my life. You know, so to come here and have, definitely in this room, right? Because this room can be intimidating. Right where this podium is, I've actually been arrested. So coming in here, in front of a group of people, authorities, that actually want the best for me, was so meaningful, right? To come here and see a smile, to hear a clap for even, let alone just showing up, but doing my basic needs, right? For going to my mental health appointments, for getting my meds, stuff like that, and for them to help me, right, with resources. I wouldn't have been able to find the housing if it wasn't for them. I wouldn't have been able to get on insurance if it wasn't for this program. You know, the stuff that normal people can do, I wasn't capable of. I did not know how to adult back then. ASC offered structured guidance, right? Like, I was very much in control. If I wanted to, I could have went off and did my own thing. But they actually showed me love, tolerance, and patience to get my life back on track. And if I knew I needed anything, I knew I could call anyone on that panel. There was amazing people on the panel, and I'm sure there still is today, right? It was awesome. It was almost a therapeutic value that I was missing out on my life, right? I was so discontent with life, I was afraid of society, I was very morally flexible, and since ASC, that has changed, right? You know? Like I said, that was going to be the first day of the rest of my life. About four years ago, I don't know that Dylan no more. My life is full of purpose. I've taken on great things since then, you know? During ASC, I got involved with an organization for sobriety living, and I flourished in that. I opened up a new house for the community. I'm expecting a baby nowadays, you know? I have a great job. I'm certified through K-Dads to be a peer mentor and peer specialist to work with people with mental health and substance use disorders, right? So this is what ASC has done for me. And no way, in shape or form, did I think I could ever achieve this. My life was out of control. I honestly have lived past the way I figured was I would live. I didn't think I'd even make it this far in my life. I really did. You know? So I am very super grateful for this ASC. Like I said, I'm not normal. I did it a not-normal approach to correcting myself. And this was the way. It was almost like they peer mentored me. They really did. It was structured guidance. That's the best way to put it. You know, the resources they came in clutch with, I didn't have housing, food, shot, like all of that. They came, they met my needs, and he said it the best, right? And we came in here every week, every week is when I started. And coming in here with no hope, but seeing other people in their different phases, right, gave me hope that this is achievable, right? I seen people graduate, I seen people with their lives together, and I figured if they can do it, I can too, right? And just to be in there clapping for other people waiting to is huge, you know? Because there's a lot of things that just, mental health is a big deal, and I feel like untreated, it is a huge deal for some people. It's a bit much, you know? And there's a lot of people out there that are probably untreated, definitely me, all through, you know, up to the last four years. That's why I was revolving in and out of the incarceration system, and I still had no help with that. It wasn't really correcting anything for me. ASC changed that for me. This program I will always be extremely grateful for. That's when I got this call, hands down, I definitely took it and ran with it, because I'll be forever in debt to this program, you know? So to pay it back, I'm here trying to pay it forward. This program saved my life. And with that, I pass, guys. Thank you.
The next one was going to be Rachel Holdhouse. Some of you may know her as the hope dealer in our community, is a former graduate of ASC, has a lot of pain in her jaw right now, so wasn't going to be here tonight. She did send a letter. This is Tricia Weeby, our probation supervisor, knows Rachel very well. She's going to read this letter and try to keep it together after Dylan. And just before she starts, the best part about Dylan is, his cup wasn't full when he came to us. Now that his cup is full, he gives it, keeps giving, and that's the best part.
Thank you. And I would challenge anyone to Google him. You will find amazing things on the internet about Dylan Gallagher. So these are comments, and I will do my best not to get emotional, but these are comments from Rachel Holdhouse. Rachel was a former participant in the ASC program from January of 2019 to January of 2020. So unfortunately, as Judge said, Rachel's not able to be here tonight, due to some health complications, but she was, she stressed, "Please have somebody speak there on my behalf," as she wanted to make sure that her voice was heard and her information was shared. So, open letter to the Topeka City Council. "The safety net of City of Topeka saved me." The safety net is called the Alternative Sentencing Court, or as we call it, ASC. She goes on to say, "I am a person with two children, a bachelor's degree in nursing, and a master's degree in healthcare leadership. I had access to every typical resource someone would need, and none that worked. In late 2018, I had a broken heart. My entire family of origin had fallen apart from this tragic, from something tragic. I was struggling to cope, I was suicidal, and crying out for someone to rescue me." But that didn't happen. Instead, life forced a process that did provide the rescue that I needed. It just looked different. She goes on, "I had been to Valeo and helped by their crisis staff, but I knew I needed more. Intervention came to me by the way of a CIT officer, Josh Clam, and his insight to bring me before the Alternative Sentencing Court judge." It was Judge Bixel at that time. Instead of taking her onto Valeo once again, so Judge Bixel said to her from the bench, with tears in her eyes, "You are a mother, you are educated, you can get it together, and now you need to do it." Rachel said, as hard as it was to hear this, she knew it was the right way, it was the right time, and what she found out is, it was what made the difference. During ASC, she had to check in every time, each week, and she described us as loving people outside of the people outside of the typical interventions for a suicidal person. The accountability that I received through the ASD, ASC program and the team saved my life. This was also the confirmation that I needed, confirming someone heard me and knew something really awful had happened in my life, which led to me falling apart. She said, I learned I still had value. I was still worthy of love and support. They just happened to wear badges and robes. And it was a thing that gave my two daughters their mom back. So Topeka Police, the judges and all the ASC team were the guardians I needed. These actions breathed life back into me. A woman, a mother, a darn good nurse and someone who was, who has been effective in using her story for the good of this community. So she says, thank you for hearing me tonight. Thank you for the support of this program. And as Judge said, for those of you that might know Rachel, she has been a powerhouse these last few years. I see a few heads shaking. She has been able to touch so many lives in our community. She goes by the note, she's known by the name, the Hope Dealer, not dope dealer, Hope Dealer. Because she puts her efforts into bringing hope and healing to many. She understands the struggle that people have, especially with mental health. This has given her hope and is why she volunteers daily as she hopes for others to be better and especially for those vulnerable people that don't have a voice. So thank you from Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel. I think it's, was it Jordan or Brian next? Okay, we're gonna do Brian next. Hi, Brian. Jordan? Jordan, someone. We've gotta get the nameplate right, Jordan.
Okay, this is Mr. Jordan Seager. He is currently in the program.
Hello, councilman, councilwoman.
Yeah. And also very proud of this guy. What's cool about his story is we've kind of tailor fit the program to his needs. He's a, a go-getter in the real estate business and really where he's got to do that work is in Kansas City. And so he's allowed to work in Kansas City. Uh, he reports by phone with Ms. Weeby, but he also gets his butt to ASC when we need him to. And so these are, this is a fresh set of eyes, but Tricia gave him a call and he said he would love to speak, so here you are, Jordan.
So I want to tell a little bit of my backstory here. Kind of have this all written down. It's a little bit long-winded, so bear with me. I might get a little bit lost, but, um, the way that it kind of ended up here, um, is I ended up dropping out of college. I kind of lost my sense of purpose. I had an associate's in software slash hardware engineering. I figured out that it wasn't for me. I didn't want to have to sit, you know, in a cubicle for nine to 10 hours a day. Ironically enough, I'm doing just that today. Um, I ended up losing my job subsequently shortly after, um, and that was kind of where my downward spiral, uh, spiral began. Um, I eventually got another job in the nightlife, which contributed towards that. I started taking harder substances. I started getting drunk more often. I was, um, it was a recipe for disaster. I ended up distributing those substances to other people and it only got worse and worse. Um, not too long after I had gotten involved in the nightlife and things like that, my father had passed away and that's where it really began to tank. It's kind of, it's taken a toll on me and till this day, um, it's an ever consistent battle with having to fight the cravings, having to fight, uh, the friends or the foe, I wouldn't say foes necessarily, but acquaintances that were once friends who contributed towards, you know, the long doing of taking drugs, drinking, partying, smoking, things like that. Um, still frustrated with those turn of events, um, and having to go through my father's passings, I ended up kind of losing myself and detaching myself from said reality, you know? I lost my sense of purpose when I had dropped out of college. Um, I didn't get the job that I wanted. I ended up becoming a clerk at a Dollar General. I ended up losing that job. Um, I wanted to take any job that I could and I ended up getting, you know, dished out substances that ultimately made my life worse. I started falling behind on debts. Um, I couldn't keep up with my bills. Just began drinking, smoking, partying to make myself feel better, you know? Having instant gratification over a long-term success and longevity for myself as a human being. Um, what set me the course for better was meeting my current significant other, um, that gave me responsibility for myself, um, my cats and her as well. Um, I was on a roller coaster of use even within, um, I helped her fight her own battles till this day, which one day landed me, uh, behind the wheel, um, on drugs and drunk in Topeka. Um, I ended up moving to Topeka with her. I was still partying, I was still doing this and that, and I decided to drive behind the wheel, um, under the influence of drugs and alcohol. Um, I subsequently got arrested, uh, they, and from there, my life started to change with ASC. I dropped everything but couldn't stop smoking. Um, I ended up filing my diversion agreements and the city prosecutor at the time told me that there was one last option and that was the alternative court sentencing. I took it right away because I didn't want to ruin the rest of my life. Luckily, the city prosecutor had given me that choice and, um, how this has benefited me ultimately, um, first and foremost was sobriety. I'm almost 200 days clean. Um, it's been ever-changing for my life. I've taken risks that I have necessarily put off or didn't want to do. Um, because of this, I've wanted to take on more responsibility and I've held myself personally accountable, um, than I would, of course, with proper guidance from the judge, um, Trish over there and the counsel that sits, um, during the time of ASC. Having authority figures look over my progress and meet with me was a game changer on how I perceived not only myself, but the system overall. They opened up services and outlets for myself and others to explore and maintain sobriety. I reconnected with my family. I put focus on my physical and mental health and I've achieved goal, goals given to by both them and myself that I wouldn't have or didn't want to achieve. I've taken risks and landed in areas that I once thought were blocked from reality when I lost myself. The importance of ASC gives individuals like me and others the chance to change their situation with determination, of course. We're given opportunities and resources that we can explore, give ourselves goals to achieve and find peace and resolution with ourselves and society. Value and connection between the system and the people is a fresh take on what was originally felt automated in absolutes. There are chances given, respect earned and achievements praised, giving a whole new meaning to what it means to integrate back into society. Being human is valuable. Connection and understanding is more humanizing than punishment. If one is determined to steer the course, all success, all success takes its effort. As somebody who has been involved in the system early on in my life, ever since I was a juvenile, I had a warm feeling coming into this. Um, like they were saying with the whole collapse, just showing up here, seeing other people succeed is definitely, it gives you the leg up and it gives you that morale to keep going. I enjoyed the connection, watching people succeed and feeling better about myself, knowing that I'm not the only one who's going through this. Where initially the system dealt with absolutes and repercussions, it has opened new doors to relate and lend a hand. I still have my stances and viewpoints on the systems surrounding authority and/or organizations and I didn't expect Topeka to set the bar over surrounding counties, but it did just that. There is a long way to go, um, with connecting the system and the people and this is certainly an effective start, start in my opinion. Since joining, I've taken care of most responsibilities that I was once putting off. I've completed therapy and I'm getting my license reinstated. This has helped me learn budgeting, goal cell, uh, goal setting and ownership of accountability. My reconnection with my family has made me feel better about myself and I've started taking care of my mental health and have been very adamant on exercise. I wanted to be involved in real estate and I am now under a company where I am with a good mentor and coworkers as well. I've started my own business and I've been working on and off to apply what I've learned and hopefully within the next year, I'm looking to mend all of my debts and, and purchase a duplex to be a property owner. I don't think I would have gotten this far if I wasn't involved in this program. I wouldn't have taken the necessary strides in order to do so. I put off a lot of this. I procrastinated. Um, I thought at some point that I honestly wouldn't be able to achieve these things, but with the help of proper guidance and goals set for not only myself, um, but by the judge and people around me, that it was truly achievable. With determination and consistency, utilizing the tools and resources available, learning the nested life lessons that come along with ANC or ASC, one can turn themselves around fully. I promise you that. It's really worth it. I didn't think that coming into this, I was pretty frustrated. I was mad at myself. I was mad at society. I got taken in with cuffs. I've never been through that whole instance before. Um, it made me feel a little bit lesser. It got me down and I ultimately, I didn't, I really didn't even want to do this, but they welcomed me with open arms. It was a game changer. As soon as I walk in and walked in and had my first meeting, seeing everybody sitting there, going person by person, it really warmed my heart and woke me up to, I'm not the only one doing this, you know? I'm not the only one in this type of position. Having that morale and seeing other people who are in the same boat as you is really, it really gives that comfort zone that a lot of people may not have. You know, those people that are isolated, either homeless, addicted to drugs out there, um, they may not find that. And having that comfort zone of people who are willing to lend a hand, people from the community, people who run the city, um, it's definitely an eye opener for a lot of people and it can definitely go a long way. So, um, like he said, I'm definitely in debt to ASC. You know, I don't think I would have gotten as far if I didn't have the proper guidance in order to do so, especially with the passing of my father. I lost that authority figure in my life. So it definitely goes a long way for me, but thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak here. I really do appreciate it.
Thanks, Jordan. This is Mr. City Employee, so my smile's really big. Miss Davis, my, she's utilities, right?
Yeah, come on.
Brian Rubbles.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, residents of Topeka. AMC has really been a very positive out, uh, effect on me. It has given me resources to use. It's given me friendships to last a very long time. It's given me connective opportunities to work with others and so that others can see that there is other opportunities besides going down the opposite road. So if you see somebody say something or, you know, if you need help in a way, that the other society or anybody else in the society can't see that, they can see that. Instead of saying, what's wrong with you? They say, how can we help you? What do you need? Instead of saying, well, what are you going to do about it? How can we help you? For me, for my story is, um, I was pretty much, I worked all the time, I still do. And I've made some bad choi- choices and I figured, well, it's either now or never. And they was like, well, you can either face jail time or you can have a program to go to. And I, back in my mind, it was like, it was always, it's the court, they're going to get their money anyway, so I might as well just go ahead and just do it. But coming in here every Wednesday and talking with Tricia has really changed the way things have gone about for me. I used to go, I used to work three jobs. One job was to pay for the rides to get to the other job and one job was to help me eat. At the same time, I had to come in here and reevaluate my situation with, okay, are we going to get better? Is things going to get better? Things have to get better. And they've helped me show me, show me that it does get better. There are compassionate people out there. The court system isn't always bad. It's more or less a network of people trying to help you further along yourself and better yourself and so that you can go back out into the world and show them, hey, we mess up, you can still do it. If I can do it, you can do it. That's about all I really got to say.
Where do you work now?
Oh, well, currently, right now, I work for the city of Topeka. I am a city employee. I work for the water distribution, also called the Water Dogs. So without this program, I probably wouldn't have had it. I probably wouldn't able to get it because I was running from pillar to post, Robin Peter to PayPal, putting in applications here, putting in applications there and might miss the appointment here, might miss appointment there, but I was always here on Wednesday. Always here on Wednesday. Now I'm bi-weekly. So I've gone from phase one to phase two. And there's different phases, like you said, phase one, phase two and phase three, but it also helps you structure yourself, keeps you accountable. It keeps you going from week to week to let you know, hey, you're doing something. You get things done. Keep going on it. And so I am, I am grateful for that, for the relationships that this court has helped me build, uh, for the structure that they've helped me build, for the hope that they've given me and countless others that we wouldn't have ever had in any other court system. So ASC is not just Alternative Sentencing Court, it's a network. It's a network for mental health. It's a network for people that think that, well, it's another thing I gotta do, but instead it just shows them that, hey, this is your time. Fix it, keep accountable, do it. 12 months, you'll be out. Now it's your choice if you want to go back to doing that, but they're here to help you, show you that you don't have to do that. You don't have to always go into jail. You don't always have to turn to drugs or alcohol. You could always ask for help and they do that. They will tell you, like I said, what can we help you with? What can we help you further along in life? Add more, what's the word I'm looking for? More joy or more hope so that you can feel better about yourself.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
I know that was long, so I'm sorry about that. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Counselor McHale.
Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you, thank you to Dylan, Rachel, uh, Jordan and Brian for sharing their stories. Uh, just amazing. Um, as a person that's worked in a prison, worked in a halfway house, worked at DCF, I've seen how when you're sending people to jail, especially with mental health, without having the therapy, without having the meds, it creates a problem. And then when they leave, not having that direct connection right when they get out creates, creates that cycle of in and out, in and out, in and out. I've seen it firsthand several times. It's frustrating and this is to me is an amazing program that can help break that cycle. And recently I found this quote that I have really taken to and it says, broken, broken crowns still color. And so that's something that, you know, personally I've taken a lot to that, you know, just because something's broken doesn't mean it's useless. Doesn't mean it still can't create something amazing, you know? So I, I will always stand behind a program like this, always will push for a program like this. And I just want to thank the judge and the participants for giving it your all and making it work. Thank you.
Counselor Valdiviacola and then Counselor woman Ortiz. Okay. Counselor woman Ortiz.
Thank you. Um, I just, I too wanted to thank you guys for coming up and I know you're going to do great things, awesome things, and I look forward to those days to seeing those. Your honor, thank you. I do have a question. I don't understand why we get charged for them to be, um, putting in jail and then you just said, um, the mentally ill get charged, we get charged even three times more? Is that what you said? No? Did I misunderstand that?
The cost is the same, but on the jail aspect, the numbers show that it costs three times as more to care for them when they're in custody.
Oh, to care, okay.
Correct.
But why do we get charged? Cause we're all in Shawnee County and they're Shawnee County.
Shawnee County Jail, city of Topeka, client. I, we, they own the jail. Um, they give us a little bit of a break because obviously we're probably their biggest customer. Um, I think the usual rate is a hundred dollars a day. They give us a break at 96. Uh, we go through it every month in great detail and make sure the hours are right. Um, at this point, that's about the best answer I can give you.
Well, and I know, um, I'm gonna, myself and my colleague Spencer are gonna dig for deeper answers because I know it's been like that since I've been on here, um, but it just doesn't make sense because our taxpayer money goes, goes to the jail too, right? So I just, I just never understood that as well. But thank you for what you're doing and continue to do what you're doing. Thank you.
I appreciate it and I'll just say welcome from the entire team. I just want to get that across. I'm, I kind of lead it, but everybody is integral in it, but I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor woman.
Thank you, mayor. Um, Judge, thank you to all of your staff and you and to the ones that came up, the individuals that came up to speak. Um, you know, we needed to hear your stories because... You know, we needed to hear your stories because in, I here and just in the past several days have dealt with so many intense mental health calls. And, you know, I just want to give a huge shout out to Bill Persinger because he really stepped up on these in a way that especially for one family was so absolutely beyond themselves. And I was shocked at the level of lack of assistance that this person had received. So we know that mental health is a huge issue and, you know, Councilman Cal said, you know, even broken crayons color. The thing that you four need to understand, and that including the young woman that's not here or the woman that's not here, is that to some extent, we're all broken. We are all broken, right? Some of us are just better at hiding it. So when you go around and you tell your stories that you've been broken, understand, that's exactly what makes you human is because we walk this crooked path with our brokenness, right? And so I just want to say that the stories needed to be heard because I'm telling you, coming into this meeting and the level of mental health issues that are out there and despair that is out there and poverty that is out there are mind numbing. And I, and I'm talking about, there's good things happening here in Topeka, absolutely. But I am talking about the other part. So I also want to know is if there, if there is anything that you need to increase the help that is, comes within that space and that weekly space that you would come and ask us or tell whoever, because it seems to me that this is an exceptional program. And for the challenges that we're facing right now in Topeka, it's like this little candle. You all are candles, right? Your souls are candles. And so I just want to say thank you to you and your staff. Because again, you cannot fake this kind of stuff. It has to be real or the people that you are serving, they will feel it and they will not engage. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselwoman. I appreciate that.
Councilman Emerson and then Counselwoman Neger.
Thank you, Judge. Yeah, I go with the others said it. Takes a lot of guts to come up here, so I really appreciate, appreciate you guys. You know, Judge, in the seven and a half years I've been on this council, I've heard a lot of great things the city does, but this may be the past. So thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for your vulnerability, for coming to speak before us about something that is not a glamorous part of your life. I think just to build upon what everybody else has said, yeah, some people are better at hiding it and they do not want to show it. So I just really appreciate you guys putting it all out there because that illustrates the strength that you have and what this program, what these people are doing for our citizens. So thank you all and that's all I've got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything further?
If I could also add, I agree with everything that the governing body has said. And you know, in these times that are very trying locally, statewide, nationally and worldwide, we look to people for leadership. We look for people who are examples of what we want to be. And oftentimes, I think we look maybe in only one direction. And I think sometimes we look in the direction of some people who are already there, but we don't look back to see those who are struggling to get there. And I think that's who you represent. And in that, and in that fashion, I believe that you are role models for people that maybe they never would have expected would have come through this kind of a program. But I think the values that you have set for yourself are values that can be shared by others who are struggling as well. So I thank you for your determination and your courage. And I thank you, Your Honor, for everything that you and your staff do to help highlight this. You know, we talk about what's coming up here in a little bit about state and city and where we are. Sometimes these kinds of programs don't get the same attention as an economic development program or something else like that. These are people programs and those are the things I think we need to highlight in this community. So thank you all very much for being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, the next presentation, Counselwoman, I mean, Brenda.
The next, the third presentation is the City of Topeka Homelessness Initiative Core and Auxiliary Team Update.
City Manager.
Mayor and Governing Body, Irma, Irma, City Housing Navigator and Police Major Jana, Jana will make this presentation with you. I'm sensitive to how my own name is pronounced. I had to practice Counselwoman Vadi, Vadi Vialkola's about a month, so I'm not going to butcher names if I don't have to. But you know what I mean.
Thank you for both being here. Start when you're ready.
Good evening, Governing Body, Mr. Mayor. My name is Irma Fawdowa. This is Major Jana Kazar. We are honored to be co-leading the city's homeless initiative. And it's with great pleasure that we provide you with an update on the progress of this crucial initiative. Over the past few weeks, both the core and auxiliary teams have engaged in fruitful discussions and it is through this dialogue that we have developed a comprehensive project statement. The focus of our project is to promote a safe community standard that addresses the complexities of homelessness that affect the quality of life for all Topequans while increasing the accessibility of housing and services. Over the next eight months, the core team will convene weekly to dig deeper into this issue. At this stage, our primary goal is to gain a profound understanding of the intricate dynamics surrounding homelessness. We have initiated the process of identifying key stakeholders that could play a pivotal role in supporting our initiative and ensuring its success. By doing so, we aim to build a solid foundation upon which we can move forward with confidence. We appreciate your ongoing support and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counselwoman Vadi Vialkola.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Irma and Jana. With being a part of the auxiliary team, I could see how much effort and work had gone in already into the process. And I can see that huge difference in, like before you had started when we did, tried to do the first round of it, which was kind of challenging, but you can feel it going in a different path. I, I will ask one thing and I sent an email out about this after I had seen a CJ online article, is that does Sheriff Hill know about this program? I mean, that's really what I want to ask. And if not, can, and, and I know the chief answered to the best of his ability, but we have county folks involved in the core team, in the auxiliary team. So the disconnect, and this is a statement, this is not a commentary towards you all, the disconnect in, in, in maybe what the media knows and the media does not know and what Sheriff Hill knows and may not know, I think is very important to try to bridge because it, to me, what it does, and you're not media, but what it does is it sends mixed messages that we don't know what we're doing. And this initiative that you all are helping spearhead along with, you know, the consultant and all the agencies that are coming on board and the city being really strong in this, folks need to understand that don't watch city council and that maybe only read CJ, you know, Capital Journal or KSNT or whatever, that we're actually working together on this and I hope as well as we unroll the camping ordinance, that the county is being kept up to speed on all of this. And that's not you guys. That's a comment that I'm making to the city manager. But I would just hope that Sheriff Hill is given information, if he hasn't already, and he's encouraged to come on board and, and for the public to know through the help of the media that we really, this is a very strong collaborative engagement across the city. And again, just thank you for what you guys are doing. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, you and the team behind you for what you're doing. It does, that, that the feeling is that we've, we've gotten ourselves refocused and, and started. I'm hearing good response from the people that have participated, that I've had reaction from and appreciate the reports that you've sent to us as well. And I like the priorities. It sounds like you're on a good track for focus with the people who are involved. I have a question for you in that sometimes people will buttonhole, not just me, but any of us on the council and say, well, are they thinking about this? Or are they aware of what's happening and such and such? Is there a particular email address or phone number that we could suggest to people who have ideas or concerns, any information that you ought to have that shouldn't stop with me? Or if you would like us to be the purveyors of that and send, send information, just tell us what would be the best communication?
Sure. And thank you for the email you sent with your constituents' questions and, and ideas. We appreciate all of them. The easiest way is to send the email to the homeless initiatives email. And I, I think we sent that to you in a response. I'm not sure. If not, we can get that to you, homeless initiatives.
Homelessinitiatives@topeka.org.
Homelessinitiatives@topeka.org.
Correct. No S, sorry.
Okay. Homelessinitiatives@topeka.org. Got it? Thank you. Much appreciated.
Sure.
Thank you. Further? Counselwoman Neger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really excited to be back here in a year and hear a wonderful, wonderful success stories just like we did with our last presentation. So good luck and thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I could make a comment and the city manager was in the room when we heard it. We were at the League of Municipalities. Counselwoman Hofer was there as well. And they were talking about problems in big cities, Kansas were a big city. And they were talking obviously about homelessness. And there were a couple, three different communities that spoke up as to what they'd been trying or what they're looking at. But I was very pleased to hear someone state very clearly, you need to look at Topeka. Topeka is a good example to how to approach this problem, that they're doing a good job. That was very good to hear in a room full of community leaders from across the state. Because sometimes we don't give credit to the people who are doing the work like yourselves, that we are further ahead than we think we are sometimes because you're so down into that work. But it was, and I think Counselwoman Hofer confirmed that, it was well received, the things that Topeka is doing. So they're watching us. They're watching us with hope because they're struggling with the same things at different levels and different population sizes, but it's all still the same problem. But I want to acknowledge that because that speaks to the work that you're doing, that people appreciate and are looking at what we're doing. And that comes to, directly to you and your efforts. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anything further?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Irma and Jana.
We'll move on to the second item if the clerk will read.
All right. On the consent agenda, we have minutes of the regular meeting of October 3, 2023, and there are no applications.
Okay. Heard the brief. Motion to approve by Counselwoman Neger, second by Counselwoman Ortiz. We can vote with the little block this down, I guess. Tell us when you're ready.
Ready to vote.
Don't get to play with that.
All right. We have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Move on to agenda item number four. Brenda.
A is a professional, or approval of a consulting contract between the City of Topeka and RevPAR International Incorporated for providing hotel advisory and asset management services.
Mr. City Manager.
So Mayor and Governing Body, it's taken us a while to get here, to get to this point. This is an important point to be at. I want to thank Braxton and his team and the city attorney. We've had a lot of people involved in this hotel discussion ever since it started moving towards being ours. And this is a critical step. And it's a critical step that's going to take us to another level in the hotel ownership business. So Braxton will outline what, what this contract means to us.
Thank you, City Manager, for the opportunity. So the contract is between the city and RevPAR International. RevPAR has an extremely skilled and experienced staff that has 30-plus years in the hotel industry. Quite simply, we are hard workers, we are bright, but we do not have 30 years of experience in the hotel industry. We need someone who is an absolute expert to provide us as a team and you as a governing body with their expert analysis and recommendations as to how to move forward. So what's contemplated is a suite of services that includes them taking a deep dive into the financials to come up with a, what they believe based on their experience and their modeling, that this is going to look like in terms of how profitable it can be and what level of rehabilitation that needs to happen. We also are looking for them in terms of helping to find a developer to take this on. We're looking at them to help us identify the appropriate flag and to come up with a, what would be the best management company to manage this hotel and to basically come forward to you and have the conversation with you all in terms of what the recommendation is to see if there's buy-in because this is not going to be an inexpensive process in terms of getting this hotel to a position where a developer is willing to take it. And with that, I'm, will gladly stand for any questions that you have. But we would respectfully ask for your approval of this very important contract to get us the professional assistance we need to continue to move forward with Hotel Topeka.
Thank you, Braxton. We can start discussion or a motion and then we go into a discussion. Is there a motion to make or are there questions for Braxton? Counselwoman Emerson?
I just move approval to the discussion.
Okay. Motion to approve by Counselman Emerson, second by Deputy Mayor Dobler. Tell us when you're ready. Oh, well, any discussion. Counselwoman Cal.
My, my main question is, and I'm not sure how much it ties in this, but when we take over, who's going to be our day-to-day point person from the city with the hotel and be able to help make those decisions until we get someone and help assess things and until we get someone that actually runs it for us?
So the project manager for this Hotel Topeka project is myself, so I will be your point of contact. If you have any questions, then I will be able to, to hopefully answer them or to get you to the people that can. But certainly, as soon as RevPAR can get in here and roll up their sleeves and take a deep dive, then that's my expectation is that they will be here with me to talk to you in terms of what they found and what their recommendations are.
Thank you. Maybe I'm, oh, Counselwoman Hofer.
And I forgot my mic. When would this go into effect? Would it be after we take control of the hotel, before we take control of it? I didn't know when it would.
Thank you. That's a great question. This would go into effect after approval and signature by the city manager would go into effect immediately so that we can get them on board and get them, and get them started, providing us with the consulting services.
Okay.
Now, that was going to be my question. Thank you for asking it. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, when we're ready to vote. Thank you, Braxton. That's all of our action items for this evening. So we'll move now to public comment.
Now, in the public comment, we have three individuals listed, the first being Paul Lastly. Paul Lastly? Mr. Lastly, do you understand the light system that we use here for your comments? If the green light goes on, it means you start your time of four minutes.
Okay.
Yellow light goes on, says you have one minute left. The red light goes on, and that's the limit of your time.
Kick me out.
Okay? Start when you're ready, sir.
You want me to push the button?
No. The clerk will take care of that.
Okay. I've been here before. I'm pretty sure everybody knows it concerns the federal court, Kansas, and 24 Highway. The issue continues to be the trees. I understand everybody has to do with the code violations to bring it up to par, whatever. But the main issue is overgrown trees. And the owners and landladies and all of them, they always tout trimming and deadwooding and, you know, how effective that would be. And it's not. It's not. They're overgrown. Some of them are 150-foot tall. And they're a danger to the public. And it's been proven over the years, four years that I've been there. I've sustained $1,800 damage to my roof two years ago, and just three months ago, $2,475. And there doesn't seem to be any solution, because you can't pin them down. The LLCs, whoever owns it, you never know who does what, and they're not going to communicate with you, even unless they, you got this phone number, you got this address. We don't get anything back when we write. Twelve of us sent letters recommended by the council to the people in Nebraska, and we get answers from Nevada. Not answering the letter, raising the rent. You know, that's all it's about. Didn't answer any question about damages to our trailers, what they plan to do in the future. So, for four years, we've had to put up with this. And I think if anybody lived there, here, and a storm comes up and you see everybody run outside, see what way the wind's coming from, move their cars away from the trees, make sure your dogs and stuff's in the house, and you worry about it, and you spend the whole storm waiting for that one limb that's going to tear your house apart or kill you. And when you talk about a tree that's 100 feet tall or over, 150 feet tall, and 60-foot up is a 2,000-pound limb, you know, it's not, it's not easy. And without an ordinance, oh, God, please give us an ordinance so that we can solve this. Because that's the only way it's going to happen. They're not going to do anything. They're not going to do anything otherwise. Just lip service, and you got to chase them all over every three, four states, and nobody is held accountable. You can't find anybody that's going to be accountable. And they get out of it every day, every month, every year. It's the same thing over and over. We need an ordinance about these trees. And I am an expert tree service person. I go all the way back to Wichita Park Board Wood and Tree Service, Aspen. And I just can't understand why we can't do this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Second person to have is Kathy Brown.
Good evening. Am I close enough? I'm being heard? Okay. I'm here tonight to address you in your capacity as individuals who appoint seven members of the Board of Trustees, the public library, Topeka Shawnee Public Library. And I'm here because, like so very, very many people all over our country, I would put it this way, it's an ill wind that blows no good. We all had the experience of that ill wind when we experienced COVID. But in the wake of it, parents found for the first time the things that their beloved children were being given to read, both at the schools and then also in our public libraries. I'm somewhat late to the party. I didn't really understand. I'm a lawyer and a nurse, and I would have thought that I would have known about it. But I really didn't hear much about it until relatively recently. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the American Library Association. I think the thing to get across is that the American Library Association, like our libraries, they're revered institutions, not just old ones. We all remember the joy we had as kids growing up and going to the library and the wonderful help the librarians gave us. When I was a little kid growing up in New York City, I remember the library seemed imposing on Fifth Avenue with the big stone lions and the big, you know, Bozart mansion. But we weren't scared to go in there, because we knew once we opened the doors, the librarians were there, and we knew they loved us. And we knew all they cared about was introducing us to the joy of books. That's very much changed now. Most recently, the American Library Association elected as their president an individual by the name of Emily Drabinski. Her statement upon her election was horrifying, but it gives you a flavor of what we're dealing with now. This individual stated, and I quote, "Wow, I can hardly believe the American Library Association has just elected a lesbian Marxist as their president." Not content with this enunciation, she went further. She then stated, "My agenda is not to do any of the things that the library normally did." She had no interest in children learning to read. She stated, and I quote, "My agenda is to queer the library." All over the country, people are showing up, and none of us can really get across the horror of what's happening in our libraries. I mentioned that I'm a lawyer. It's important to notice that, to note that our thrust is to remove the juvenile filth. I will read aloud to you from some of the books in our Topeka Public Library, which we buy with our taxpayer monies without our consent. This comes from a book called All Boys Aren't Blue, recommended for children as young as 10. And I quote, "I got a new strap-on dildo today. It'll fit my favorite harness. Can't wait to have your cock in my mouth."
Ma'am?
Can't wait? Yeah?
I would refrain from your comments, as descriptive as they are during this public comment session, because we do have a lot of people watching on air, and there may be juveniles.
Exactly my point, sir. Thank you. You made my point. You made my evening. Thank you very much indeed. It's disgusting. You are right. And it's in our libraries, and it's for kids starting at the age of seven. Thank you. I don't have to go further, because we don't want even adults to see this filth. But every single day, our American Library Association and our Topeka Board of Trustees is making this available to little kids every single day. Excuse, this is videoed, isn't it?
Pardon?
This is videoed?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Chris Deister.
Good evening, Mayor Padilla. Good evening. And good evening, councilpersons. And Mr. Neinstadt? That's how you pronounce it? Goes back to the old country, my friend. Yes. And our city attorney, Amanda Stanley. And our clerk? Can't remember. Anyway, I want to respectfully suggest that discussion of the unsheltered here, adapt a bit of simple nomenclature as they go on. I noticed that the Corps, this Corps and auxiliary, are doing a wonderful job. I know these meetings are kind of not advertised a whole lot, but I was able to hear that the meeting went on last Saturday, I think. And these folks are giving their entire Saturday, Friday, and half a day Saturday to address, to begin to address this homelessness problem. And I cannot congratulate them more thoroughly. And yet, you know, I realized that politeness necessitates people not just coming in and giving their opinions. So, I was asked to sit down, and I did so, and just marveled at the way these folks are attacking the problem. And congratulate them on hanging in there. But in regard to the unskilled dilemma here in Topeka, the Corps and auxiliary are doing a great job, and the public is also inviting, the Corps is also inviting, as it were, input, which I plan to submit this week in detail through a web, not a website, but an email. So, I am happy to hear that and can be very supportive of what's going on. So, I'll be emailing a detailed solution to the city council and Corps and many others in hopes it will be heard as the most loving, respectful, and equitable plan for all citizens of Topeka and even for those who were addressing the homeless. So, I wanted to just mention that the, this is all I have to offer tonight, and that is as a preamble to what I'm going to be sharing by email to each one of you and Topeka at large this week, that the present dilemma referred to as the unsheltered or homeless crisis has been described as very complex and complicated, and cities are struggling with it all over the United States with varying degrees of failure. And the reason their problem has brought about such confusion, this problem has brought about such confusion, is that actually, we're dealing with three problems. And I would like to share with that Corps group, if I, since I can't be there, and our city attorney is here, that maybe she can relay, before I even get this out on an email to them, that when we look at this in a kind of a...
Sir, that's your four minutes.
Yeah. Oh, that's four?
Yeah.
I didn't...
Yeah.
Can I have two more?
Two more minutes?
Yes.
So, move, Mayor.
Okay. Motion, sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Two more minutes, sir.
All right. I'll be quite...
Start when you're ready.
Now, alls I wanted to mention was this, I wanted to share with the group that we might add a little bit of helpful nomenclature here that would help us toward a better, have an easier path toward the goal, and that is to consider these three groups, these unsheltered groups, in three groups. And that is the unfortunate, unsheltered, the mentally ill, unsheltered, and the transient, intransigent, unsheltered. That is the unfortunate, unsheltered, or disabled, but stable. They may have been turned out from a job or out of prison or such and such, and we desperately desire to help them, and we need to. Just as we saw Brian and Jordan and Dylan here, they need all the help they can get.
Yep. One more minute.
The mentally ill, unsheltered, are unstable mentally and rather incapable of cooperation the way we'd like it. So, they need help, and we offer temper food, temporary food, clothing, and shelter for them, and even obligatory remandation to a facility for help. That means they need to be helped to get there. And the third, that the transient, intransigent, unsheltered, are unwilling or refusing to change their views or to agree about something. That's the definition of intransigence. And we have X to offer, and if they don't want that offering, then what they're saying is, I don't want to help. I don't want your help. I want help my way. We have one thing to offer, and it is all the help that we can do. And if that is not acceptable, then they're welcome to live anywhere else, because it's a free country. But they're not free to disobey. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Lloyd Schroder. Lloyd Schroder. Okay. That was the final person signed up. We'll now move on to announcements. Madam Clerk?
For the October 17th agenda, we have one board appointment. We have two presentations, fire prevention, and then the Task Force Against Domestic Violence report. The consent agenda, we have two consulting contracts. We have an ordinance for the housing trust fund. And then on action items, we have an ordinance for the Clay Vacation at Clay Sherwood Rentals, LLC, and MOU for the SAVE program, and then a resolution for Hotel Topeka at Center City, and then the hotel management agreement.
Thank you. City Manager? Move with the councilmembers. Councilwoman Ortiz for announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just personally wanted to thank staff, especially Braxton, for hanging in there with me for the last two weeks to make something happen today. We're both glad it's over and we can move forward. For Sylvia Davis, taking my calls about these water breaks. For Code, that has just continuously worked with me, not against me, but worked with me, and I can't say enough about them. And I just wanted to let you guys know that I truly appreciate the work that you do each and every day. It's not an easy job, and I'm only one of nine, but I just wanted to say that, because it was frustrating to me on my end, so I can only imagine to them on their end how frustrating they are trying to get it done. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Tomorrow's Wednesday. We're all glad to see Wednesday.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman... Okay. Councilman Kell?
All right. Today is World Mental Health Day. If you feel that you need help, please get it. There's lots of resources out there. Please reach out to somebody. If you don't know where to look, they can help you. After last week's meeting, I was having a very, very, very rough time, and I ended up calling the Veterans Trisys Line, just because I had to talk to somebody. That was a rough meeting and a rough, everything we had to go through. So, and that was the first time I did that, but I knew at that point, I had to talk to somebody. So, if you feel like you need to talk to somebody, reach out to somebody, please. Speaking of veterans, I'm a veteran of the Navy, and on Friday, the Navy turns 248-years-old. It was a great experience in my life. I made many great friends that I consider my second family, and it's... how frustrating they are trying to get it done. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Tomorrow's Wednesday. We're all glad to see Wednesday.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman, uh, nothing, Councilwoman, I don't remember. Okay. Councilwoman Kell.
All right, today is World Mental Health Day. If you feel that you need help, please get it. There's lots of resources out there. Please reach out to somebody if you don't know where to look. They can help you. After last week's meeting, I was having a very, very, very rough time. And I ended up calling the Veterans Crisis Line just because I had to talk to somebody. That was a rough meeting and a rough, everything we had to go through. So, and that was the first time I did that. But I knew at that point, I had to talk to somebody. So if you feel like you need to talk to somebody, reach out to somebody, please. Speaking of veterans, I'm a veteran of the Navy. And on Friday, the veteran, the Navy turns 248 years old. It was a great experience in my life. I made many great friends that I consider my second family. And it's, you know, just like we were talking in structure and things like that in the Corps, it's taken, the military's taken people that may have gone, been going down the wrong path and straightened them out and gotten their life together. And I feel like the military did that for me. And so. And finally, on the topic of the library, parents have a choice on what their children choose to eat. They have a choice on what they allow their children to watch on TV. They have a choice on what they allow their children to look on the Internet. I'm going to let parents choose what their children read in the library. Most people can find a subject matter or a book in the library they don't agree with and want it removed. If we allow this, for, allow all books for every person wanting out of the library, we would have an empty library. It's one of those things, you just have to watch what your kids are grabbing. If you don't agree with it, you know, there's so many books in there. I probably could go and probably find 20 books. I'm like, why is this in here? You know, this spreads hate. This spreads misinformation. This teaches crime. You know, there's gonna be something like that that I could sit there and say, I disagree with. I went in the library, and I'm gonna have 100 people say, no, it belongs there. So I will never agree with taking subject matter out of the library. It's the parents' choice to regulate what their kids are reading. Thank you.
No, 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 ma'am. Councilwoman Neger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to go ahead and recognize that this is, we are in the last few days of National Hispanic History Month. And please reach out to your local library, find out more about all the people in our community, all of the communities within the Hispanic community. There, it's not a monolith. There's so much there. There's so much richness. And especially in the community of Topeka, we owe a lot to our Hispanic, Latino, Latina, Latinx, to the communities that built up this one, I don't want to say one history, but what we can celebrate this month. And so I do, I am proud to serve with people of Hispanic heritage, and I am very, very grateful for their perspective. I also want to go ahead and say that tomorrow is National Coming Out Day. And so it is a time to go ahead and be honest, to be vulnerable. And however you find that family, however you find that supportive community, please, I hope that you feel the support and love that you deserve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor. Nothing? Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry if I should say something about this tonight, but I'm going to. I guess, City Manager, it might be time to officially extend that invitation to our good friends at the county about having a meeting regarding the homelessness issue. I watched their meeting the other day and heard the comments, and I was disheartened, to say the least, that at their meeting, they all seemed to think, "City's doing nothing about the homelessness problem." I was just, it kind of blew me away, to be perfectly honest. I guess they haven't been paying attention as we passed what, based on my research, is probably the toughest camping ordinance passed by a city in the state of Kansas. They haven't been paying attention as our staff, working with the rescue mission and others, has been going in and regularly cleaning up camps that have created significant problems throughout the city. They haven't been paying attention as we sat here through the budget process and saw multiple presentations on the significant people, resources, and money we're pouring into housing programs and addiction and mental health programs to help those individuals. They haven't been paying attention, I guess, as we've been assisting the Sheriff's Department in stepping up enforcement along the trails and those patrols through our police department. They haven't been paying attention as we've talked about reviewing our panhandling ordinance to address whether we need to reassess which intersections fall under that. And I guess they haven't paid attention as we've had as extensive conversation as we've brought in a consultant to look at what programs we can put money into. I guess if that's the definition of doing nothing, then we're guilty. So I understand that they're the county and don't pay attention about everything we're doing over here. But it really did come across as the city of Topeka is doing nothing, and the county needs to figure out when the city's gonna start doing something about it. And I took some offense to that, even though I'm sure it wasn't intended. So let's extend that invitation. Let's get together with the county and have a real conversation about how we can actually work together as two different governing entities in this county and get something done as a group. And I'd appreciate that. With that, I have office hours on Saturday at 9:00 AM to 10:30. And come on by Fairland Plaza and talk to me about anything you want. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer. Oh, did I, sorry, Richard.
No, no.
Let me get through the council members and I'll come back to you. Sorry about that. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank the staff. I, I don't know if it's the full harvest moon or whatever, but there just seem to be constant issues, observations from the residents of District One and elsewhere in the city. Plus, I've got downtown and the river and the Polquency Viaduct and closed streets and so on. So staff's been hearing from me a lot, and I don't think I've made any of these up myself. It's just things that needed to happen. And I just appreciate so much the prompt responses and the action. And generally, it's a report on something that's already settled or just some information I needed to pass along to somebody. And I even tried to bypass Braxton, who gets so many of them. And it got back to him anyway on the last one, and he sent me an answer today. And just want to appreciate the work everybody's doing. It matters, and you're appreciated. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vadiviala.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have to concur and concur and concur, oh, and concur again with Councilman Duncan. That meeting is needed. I'm not the most popular with some county commissioners, so don't invite me. But I have a lot of articles that they can look at. So it's needed because, again, we're trying really hard to break down the silos, and it has to be a joint effort. And I know that the commissioner that represents my district is aware of a lot of this. So I don't know why he didn't speak up at the council or at his commission meeting. So whatever. But I concur. For Mr. Lasley, we did talk on the phone today. And, you know, I think what's gonna keep, what we're gonna keep hearing come up more and more on council, at least in my realm, is that we're gonna keep hearing about issues of poverty. We're gonna keep hearing about issues of mental health. Because those are the two glaring challenges that we have to talk about. So the place where Mr. Lasley lives is probably, and I'm just gonna be blunt. I mean, I think it's one of the worst trailer parks there is in the city. But there is no ordinance for it. So a couple of weeks ago, or maybe it was a week and a half ago, we've already set up, I've already set up a meeting with city attorney to see what is out there for the possibility with getting an ordinance. I don't know if it's gonna be possible. I was straight up and told him that. I don't know if it's gonna be possible, but we can certainly look into it. And I think that this is an example of some of the issues that Mr. Lasley talks about, and I'm sure many other calls that a lot of us get about negligent, what appears to me to be negligent LLCs and the stark fear of being so poor that if you say anything, you're gonna be booted out of your residence and not have anywhere else to live, and then you'll become part of the homeless population. So I think that we need to continue our education on changing our culture of property maintenance with the strengthening LLC ordinance, with the strengthening retaliatory eviction ordinances, because these are real, and they've been beefed up and juiced up so we can take on, in my opinion, the number of bad characters that we have so that we can help continue to lift Topeka up for all. Councilman, you know, Kell, it's okay. I have struggled with major depression since right after I had my daughter, and she's almost 40. So it's not a walk in the park. PTSD is not a walk in the park. So many people here suffer with the same thing. We need to understand, we need community. We need to give voice. We need to have safe spaces. We need to rip that shame off of it because we are all bleeding out in our own ways. And I think as the years progress, as we get deeper and deeper to any number of challenges we are in as a country, as a world, it's gonna become more and more apparent. So the thing is, how do we prepare? How do we prepare? So I don't know what your struggle is, dude, but I'm feeling you on it. And I come from a family that suffers from it. So no shame, and glad you were able to talk to somebody. Finally, I just want to say thank you to Sylvia Davis for being at that early morning meeting at the constituents' house the other day with Matt and sitting there in the old-fashioned way where we can look at constituents and hear their concerns and maybe not be able to deliver 100%, but be able to give them the dignity of listening. I'm sure your mentor, Director Copley, probably told you that that's a really good way to engage. And I do want to say one thing. I plan on having a discussion with some folks that are directors and obviously, hopefully eventually, HR, because the fact that we are not paying our workers in the city a living wage is untenable. Who knows how many of our own city workers may be getting food from food banks because they are not being paid a living wage? We have to have these conversations. I'm not saying that we're gonna, money's gonna automatically appear. But these are the difficult conversations because these are city employees as well. And we have to talk the issues. And I, and I've told a couple of people that I plan on having those dialogues, and I look forward, I look forward to the conversation. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll just be really brief. I wanted to again acknowledge, on the heels of Councilwoman Neger, the impact the Hispanic community has had on Topeka. I was, had the opportunity to be asked to help celebrate the 50th anniversary of the League of United Latin American Citizens, or LULAC, here in Topeka. It has been, actually been formerly in existence for 50 years and celebrated its anniversary. It was a good opportunity to visit with the community. Councilwoman Vadiviala and her husband were there and others. And I just want to thank them for continuing to serve the, it seems primarily a senior population, but they do a fantastic job. So I just wanted to again thank them for their service. And I want to thank my colleagues who joined me at the League of Municipalities for the recent annual conference and acknowledge all the work that Councilman Duncan was doing that day over the whole weekend. Every time I turned around, he was in a different role running through that whole hotel. So Topeka was well represented there, and I appreciate that because people do look to Topeka. We say it often enough, we are the capital city. So there's an expectation that we participate and get involved. So thank you for the colleagues who were there. There is a need for one executive session. If I may have the city attorney read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed one hour for consultation with the city attorney to discuss attorney-client privileged matters regarding one or more contracts and agreements as justified by KSA 7543 19B2. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff are requested to assist the governing body in its deliberations. City Attorney, City Attorney Stanley and other staff as needed.
Okay. Heard the need for a motion to go into executive session. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Kell, second by Councilwoman Vadiviala. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That's it. All right. We will recess. We'll take a quick 10-minute recess before starting deliberations. Okay. We have concluded our discussions during executive session. No other business coming before this body. This meeting is closed. Adjourned.